There's about six or eight people in each of the sessions and we've had, what about five or six sessions now so far? We've got two more left to go, one on Thursday, one on Saturday. And it's been good. It hasn't been great turnout. You know, it's hard to get this community to come out, so.
We had eighteen when I was on. Is everyone on the, I'm seeing on the screen, participated?
Yeah, I mean, but some of them are, a lot of people you're seeing on there are city staff. So when I talk about the numbers, I'm talking about the true numbers from the community. The people that don't have to be there. Yeah.
So Phil, I think we've officially started the recording and let the public in for the meeting.
Let's get going. Thanks for that notice, Kelly. So I'm gonna call on our vice chair Jeff to start the meeting and get the show on the road.
Sounds good. Welcome, everybody, to the very second planning commission meeting. We will have our pledge allegiance and Jan, would you mind leading us in the pledge? Oh, you even have a flag. If everybody could mute their, themselves, then we won't be hearing each other. And thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jan.
You're welcome.
Annette, can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Keen? Is she there? I can't see everyone on my screen. No? Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Wolf?
Here.
Commissioner Zirk? No, it's, can anyone see him? I can't see him either on my screen. Okay. Vice Chairperson Vanden Eyckhoff?
Here.
So we have four present.
Thank you. Um. Can I get a motion for the approval of our agenda?
I still move.
I'll take, yeah. Jan? Got the motion and Duane, second it. Can I get a roll call on that, please?
Yes. Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wolf?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Vanden Eyckhoff?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Great. Now is the time for a public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on this agenda and over which the commission has jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Please state your name for the record before making a presentation. The commission may take action to direct the staff to place a matter of business on future agenda. Do we have any people in the public that would like to make it? In the comment?
We do have a couple of people that have called in and I'll just remind them to use the raise hand function if they'd like to speak.
Okay.
It looks like we have one person wishing to speak. John, can you?
Yeah, I just unmuted him, so he should be good to go. Looks like Charles Borba would like to speak.
Looks like I have to unmute myself.
There you go, Charles.
There you go.
Okay. All right. Actually, I guess this is on the agenda. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who's been serving on the planning commission is leaving tonight. You've all done yeoman's work for no pay, so true community service in its purest sense. And I want to congratulate those new members of the commission. I don't think we've ever seen this kind of a turnover at once in the commission. And there are actually other applicants who were, were very well suited to serve on the planning commission as well. So having been on the planning commission, I know what you do. I appreciate what you do. And I just wanted to say thank you to those departing and those who are joining for serving our community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Is there anybody else wishing to make a comment? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment and move to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff and will be approved by one motion if no member of the commission or public wishes to comment or ask questions. Can I get a, does anybody have any comments or questions from the public? Or the commission? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the draft minutes of January nineteen?
Don't move.
Michael? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Jan, what? Has a second. Michael, can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Wolf?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Vanden Eyckhoff?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Perfect. Well, it looks like we don't have any community development staff reports. So we're gonna move-
I just, real quick, we do have one person that called in and I just want to let them know they can push star nine on their phone and that will show us a raised hand if they did want to speak.
Okay.
Not sure they had that option earlier.
Great. Thanks for the reminder. So we're gonna move to the administration of the Ose office and so Laura's here to do that. There she is.
Yes, she's, she's right here to do that and before she gets started on that, I don't know if I'll have an opportunity, but I also wanted to thank so much the outgoing commissioners. It's been so nice working with you. It's been awesome that you have volunteered your time. I think that you also will have an opportunity to be honored at the city council here at some point in the near future. I sure wish we were in person tonight. That would make it a lot easier, but anyway, I hope that you stay in close contact with us here at the city and stay a part of the community. And again, I just wanted to thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll turn the time over to Laura.
Hey, so with the new commissioners, and I'm gonna apologize if there's noise in the background. I have two little ones at home. And as much as I try to keep them quiet, you know, a two and a half year old and a ten month old do what they want. Okay, so can the new commissioners, please raise your right hand? I'm gonna have you repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I am Ryan Betts.
Do solemnly swear
You solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
For which I'm about to enter.
For which I am about to enter.
Congratulations and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Well, now that we've had the administration of the Ose, we're gonna have a roll call of the new members or of the new planning commission. So Annette, can we do that, please?
Sure. Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Betts?
Present.
Commissioner Carranza?
Present.
Commissioner McIntyre?
Present.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Present.
And Commissioner Jeff Vanden Eyckhoff?
Here.
So we have six zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So Phil, should we do, should we have the recognition of the outgoing planning commissioners first or should we introduce our new ones?
Yes, so let's actually recognize the outgoing ones first. I think that is on the agenda formally. I didn't realize that, but it's on there formally. So I've done some of that, but if there's any words that the other commissioners would like to say, or anyone else would like to say, now is a good time to do that. And then I'd like to move on to introducing our staff team, our planning staff team, and then I'd like to hear a word from you to the new commissioners as well.
I'll go. Um. So I also want to thank, and also in the same process, give advice, so to speak, because throughout the years that I've been doing this and I have found that the staff, I think we are blessed with a very dedicated, efficient and hardworking staff. And so when you get your packets with information, they are, they are full and complete. And if you look at those things, you're gonna be, I think, fairly well informed. So I, I also, I think, I thank Phil for all his hard work. Annette has been immensely helpful all the time and always such a joy to be around. And then, of course, the planners, Kelly and John and Mariah. And Laura Christensen has been helpful many times when I have to battle my way through the California paperwork that's required for the various seminars and things that I have to do. So that's invaluable as well. So we have been blessed with, with first rate people all the way back from, I guess, some of us who've been here would call him the legendary Alfredo, who, you know, was a treasure trove of information. It's always important to try to get some perspective as to the history of how things have come about and why they are, so that you can know what you're gonna maybe try to do. And so he was valuable for that. And, and, and others. So, well, Callie is another one who was a treasure trove as well. But still, the standard is high and, and they meet it. And so you're, 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 you're lucky to be on this planning commission. That's, that's what I really think. So thank you, everyone, for, for all the attention, help that you've given me through the, through the years and and you're welcome for what I've done.
Yeah.
Very grateful.
Yeah, Jan.
I would like to exactly copy what Duane said. I do think that it has been a pleasure to work with everyone. I think that our fellow planning commissioners have been just a joy and it's very nice to see that Ryan and Dennis will be back on planning because they have prior experience and they're very, very good and glad to see that they made it back on. And I do think very strongly that the city is blessed to have the staff that we have. You know, everybody has been wonderful, very helpful, and it's made it a real joy to give back to the community and it's just been a real pleasure to, to work with everybody. So I thank everybody very, very much and wish the new guys the best, the new guys and gals the best and hope to, you know, stay in touch with you guys and, and thank you again for all you staff have done and I will miss you. I've really missed this last year of us meeting in person, I have to say, but you know, Zoom's, Zoom's been pretty good, so.
Yes, I have to second that, that it's been hard not actually being, to be in proximity with people that totally different vibe about the whole thing.
Yeah.
And so that's why, you know, it's a great way when you build your relationships with face to face, things like that. So hopefully that comes back soon because it'll be, you'll get much better.
I, I hope so too.
I'd like to just thank everybody for everything they've done. I can't really add much to what Duane and you guys have said, but you've said it very well. I learned a lot during my relatively short tenure on the planning commission and I look forward to watching you guys move everything forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. It's, it's been a pleasure for me to be able to serve with you all and yeah, I, I echo what Jan said. It's been a kind of a tough year not being able to meet together, but I'm glad we've been able to continue on Zoom and be able to see each other every couple of weeks. So it's been very nice and thank you very, very much for the service you've given to the community. Like Charles said, it's one of those things, it's an unpaid, sometimes underappreciated position, but I think that we've done some good work here. And appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to say anything to the outgoing commissioners?
Dennis Schmidt isn't gonna say anything.
He gets, he gets his turn here in a minute.
I'll miss all of you. You guys have been great. I hope you guys stay in touch with us.
Yeah, we will.
Okay.
Yeah, I look forward, I look forward when I can actually go sit on the other side, you know.
Yeah.
To the podium, you know, and harass. That'd be fun.
Well, we invite you to come back because you might be one of the, you know, the second person there, so.
I'll say a few, just a few words. And I'll introduce myself later on, who I am and whatnot, but I do want to make a, a point that, you know, the folks that are leaving are leaving a legacy for the newcomers to really continue the momentum forward. And I know some of the outgoing folks, I don't know all of them, but I would imagine that they are just one phone call or email away. So if things get challenging and we have some major projects and some major, major work efforts coming over the next two years, don't hesitate to reach out to folks that have been there, that have done that, to get some wisdom, to get some tips. Because at the end of the day, we're a family, right, as a community, and it takes a lot of us to move forward as a community. So I'm sure Jan, Duane, and the rest of the commissioners would be more than willing to have conversations, especially with the new folks as we grapple with some difficult, difficult projects.
Well said, Ryan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, we have some introductions of our incoming commissioners. We'll start with Dennis since he's right next to me.
Well, thank you very much. I'm Dennis Schmidt. I lived in our community for thirty-five, thirty-six years. My three children went to school in our community. I'm the father of six grandchildren at this point. I grew up in Los Aljos and I used to come over the hill to work. And I remember it being extremely hot in the summertime and saying to myself, I'll never live over there, over there. And it's drive on my way home and I stop at what was the halfway station. It was a gas station a long time ago. And the guy had beer there that was at thirty-six degrees and I always stopped and get there. I was underage, but they always served me. When I look at the community, one thing that I talk about a lot is there's a lot of discussion in our county about communities, but I can say from my point of view, Atascadero is a community of, for, that supports families. And for me, that is extremely important to, to have that and to allow for children and parents to bring up their families in this community in a safe environment.
Great. Thank you, Dennis. Ryan, turn some time over to you. Introduce yourself.
Yeah, I think, before I get to myself, I think Commissioner Schmidt is completely right and, and I couldn't agree more. And that's why I live in the city of Atascadero. I'll, I'll, I'll keep it short and brief. I'm not originally from the area. I grew up in the Bay Area. I met my wife in college, who, you guessed it, is from Atascadero. So after college, we moved here. We have now a family, a home. I've been working for the city of San Luis Obispo for over fourteen years. My current position at the city is assistant to the city manager. I've worked in community development, public works, and now back in city administration. I did serve on the planning commission four years ago for two years, if that makes sense. I love the community. I love how resilient this community is. It's been through lots of bumps and bruises and always shines after the fact, and I think we're living through that right now. I have a passion for community service, a passion for civil service. Planning commission is just a great way to provide that community service back to the, to the community. And I feel like that, I can board more details, but that's, that's pretty much me in a nutshell.
Great. Welcome on to the planning commission. I actually worked for the city of San Luis Obispo back from ninety-eight to two thousand and one, so in the engineering division, so.
Wonderful.
Glad to have you here. Jennifer, we move to you.
Did you say Jennifer, Jason?
Yeah, we'll move to Jennifer McIntyre.
Jennifer.
But she's muted.
Yeah.
Can you unmute yourself, Jennifer? John, can you unmute her?
Bottom left.
Just asked to unmute her, but I don't have the ability to unmute her myself. She has something on her end, I think.
Jennifer, it looks like you're still muted. Let's move, move to Jason, while you try to figure out your, your mic.
Zoom. Technology, boy. Whoa. Hey, Dennis, nice to see you. I served on Quan's with Dennis and, and Mike and I see a few other faces here that I'm recognizing. I moved here twenty-one years ago, transplant out of the San Fernando Valley. And just, I came up here to see a friend of mine graduate from Cal Poly and fell in love with the area. I just couldn't believe there was so much green and open space, growing up in a big city like LA. And you could drive any direction for ten, twenty miles and not see a park. So it's just beautiful up here, fell in love with it and met my wife. We have two beautiful daughters now and they're they're the teenagers, seventeen and sixteen. I opened up an auto repair shop, Test Ace Auto Care. So if anybody's been there, they probably have seen me running around. And, you know, this is my opportunity to give back to the community. I love the, the feel of this town. I love the way the people interact, the kindness that's shown and the, the overall just feel of how it's family and community. And I just wanted to make sure that I participated in the ongoing of that feeling. So I appreciate having the opportunity to serve. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Hey, Jason, we're glad to have you. I'm so glad you worked on my cars too. Just on my Jeep last week.
Yep, yep, yep.
Um, oh, it looks like Jennifer is unmuted now.
I am. As soon as I went to hit unmute, my dog hit my wrist and then I lost my video. I could hear you all, but I couldn't find my video and I'm clicking through everything. Anyway. I'm Jennifer McIntyre and I've lived, I've grew up all over the country, but I've lived on the central coast now for about thirty years. A ten or eleven of it cumulatively in Atascadero. Right now, I've lived in Atascadero for about a little over four and a half years. My husband and I bought a house here four and a half years ago and I think we're, we're permanently here now. I've worked for about ten years in the home building industry and then I worked for twelve years for as the commercial recycling manager for the Integrated Waste Management Authority. And then since then, I've been working for a national solar company as the regional facilities manager. I am very, very excited. I haven't had the opportunity since I have been in my current position to do a lot of community outreach and community volunteer work like I used to do when I worked at the IWMA. I have been traveling a lot and so I'm incredibly excited to have the opportunity to serve on the planning commission and to give back to the community. It's something that's very, very, very important to me. And I just really hadn't found the right fit. And so when this came to my attention, I was really excited to be able to do this. I love Atascadero. It is, for me, the perfect combination of rural and urban. I love the downtown area and all the things that it has to offer and I love the rural feel of it. I, I love the vision that E.G. Lewis had and my passion is sustainability. So the concept of rural and conservation and land conservation really speaks to me and always has. So I'm really look forward to tapping into the knowledge of all of our outgoing members and getting to know all of you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome to the planning commission.
Thank you.
And I think Victoria is our next member.
There we go, hitting that little button there. Okay. Hi. Victoria Carranza here and yeah, there, let's see. I just want to mention that I am feeling very assured in the culture that I feel like is already, you know, we're just weaving in as new commissioners. I, I've just seen the level of excitement that Duane especially, but Jan too, and you know, wanting to be a resource. So that means a lot. I just want to say that. And, you know, I came here in two thousand and sixteen to Atascadero. We bought our own home, my husband and I, and started our family. I have a three-year-old daughter and one on the way. Probably around the summertime, you'll see me popping. And thank you. And I have actually always lived in the county. I've been inching my way up from the Nopomo Mesa where I grew up more on a family compound. And yeah, it's just been a series of, like I said, kind of inching my way up the grade. I went to Aurora Grande High School and went to college at Cal Poly. I studied environmental management and minored in city planning, so I have a kind of a nerdiness for planning, I would say. And I went ahead and utilized that community planning background that I got in the nonprofit sector. I was the education director for a nonprofit called One Cool Earth and we worked on many, many projects, but a lot of it involving how to teach kids about preserving the natural resources we have and connecting to nature. So we built outdoor classrooms, water-wise landscaping systems, retrofitting and working with a lot of the maintenance department, but also a lot of the teachers. So kind of bridging the gap between curriculum and what they see outdoors and not just under fluorescent lights on a screen or chalkboard. So, yeah, then I moved on from that. I, I had worked there for well over five years and helped develop a lot of the groundwork for where they're at in the public schools. And took a little break with working in the schools to work more concentrated on, on mothers, actually. I'm, if some, some people don't know what it is, but I'm a doula, which is a support person for the, the birthing family. So I focus on the postpartum and I'd say that the lens that I can bring to the commission is definitely a very diverse perspective for families. And most importantly, I hear everybody mentioning how family-friendly this community is and I definitely support that. I volunteer with the chamber on the diversity council, so inclusion in the workplace is actually really important to me, not just professionally, but personally as a young mom. So happy to be here and just look forward to, you know, setting the intention for us to, to gain more trust and, I guess, respect and knowledge of each other. And if we can get more of that with, through the Zoom thing we're doing, so, yeah, looking forward to get to know y'all.
Thank you, Victoria. Glad to have you on the planning commission. For the new commissioners, I guess I'll introduce myself since I'll be serving with you. Jeff Vanden Eyckhoff, I have lived in, in Atascadero for twenty years with my wife of thirty years. Will be actually celebrating our thirtieth anniversary this summer. And we have four kids. My oldest is twenty-three and my youngest is fifteen. And we have four kids. My oldest is 23 and my youngest is 15. And we've had a great time living here in Atascadero. I'm a former deputy public works director for the city of Atascadero. I left the city in 2007 and started my own company, which is located here in Atascadero called Icop Design Group. I am a civil engineer. And my clients are all over the, the area. I primarily serve public agencies or firm does. I've had the great opportunity to be able to have my finger in a lot of stuff here in town. I actually designed the Suckin Gardens when we redid it back in 2005. I designed the new Veterans Memorial and I donate all, all my design services for that. And many of you may have seen me making cotton candy because I have, I run a booth at all of our events and all the proceeds go towards the Templeton High School Drama Program. So my wife and I are very involved with the drama program in our county, both in Atascadero High School and there. So anyway, I'm really excited to work with all of you and I look forward to getting to know you better over the next couple of years. Do we have any, anybody else that would like to say anything right now? Okay, Phil, do you have a directive report for us?
Yes, I'd like to start by introducing our planning staff team, since they're all here tonight and for the new commissioners. And, and then they'll say just a quick tidbit about each of themselves. And also wanted to mention too that I, if I haven't already, I'll be reaching out to you independently, each commissioner, just to give you your kind of welcome packet of information and policy stuff. And we can chat, connect. And also wanted to mention that I'm always available. You're going to have my cell phone number. You're going to have my contact info. Pretty soon, you're going to start getting staff reports from us, from my planning team that I'm about to introduce to you. And I'm hoping that you reach out to me as you have questions and, and we'll have a great time together. But without any further, I'd like to start by introducing, well, for those of you, most of you have already met Annette, who kind of holds us all together from our administrative team. She is the one that is going to put together your planning commission packets, get those out to you, all of your agendas. She's at all of our meetings, taking our minutes. And so without her, none of this would work. So thanks to Annette, and I don't know if you want to say anything, Annette, put you on the spot.
I'm planned on it, but I welcome you all. I look forward to working with you. I will be ordering some business cards for you for the planning commission as well. And at some point, we'll need to get your addresses for our labels so we can get your packets out for delivery our next meeting on the 16th, so those will go out next week. And if you have any questions, just feel free to give me a call.
And Annette, while you mention that, do they have the option of just going electronic only on those packets?
Sure.
They can let you know.
Yeah, Tori does that now. If anyone else just wants electronic copies, they can just shoot me an email and let me know. And I'll put that on our T-drive for our labels.
Great. I'm going to move on to Kelly Gleason, our senior planner. Want to say hi, Kelly?
Hi, everyone. It's good to see you all. First of all, congratulations, Victoria. It's very exciting. I'm Kelly. I'm the senior planner. I started working at the city in 2002. Took a couple of years off when my son was born and then I came back because I just couldn't stay away. So doing the same thing. We have a great planning team. It's very exciting. And we're excited to bring some big projects forward for you these next year or so.
Lots of big projects, absolutely. Next up, I'm going to introduce John Holder. He's our associate planner, part of our planning team.
Evening, everyone. Welcome. We look forward to working with all of you. My name is John. As Phil said, I'm the associate planner. I think I'm the newest on the planning team. I started in 2019. Like many, or some of you, I came here for school and stayed. Live here with my fiancee and looking forward to getting to know you all and working with you. And hopefully we could meet together in person soon.
Awesome. And I'd like to introduce Mariah, our assistant planner.
Hello, everyone. As everyone else said, congratulations and we're excited to be working with you. I am the assistant planner. My name's Mariah and I actually grew up in Atascadero. So I know the city pretty well. If your kids are around my age, I probably went to school with them. But, yeah, I'm, I just, it's really exciting working, you know, in this town I grew up in at this time especially. I think it's a really cool time. And, yeah, I'll be presenting staff reports to you soon.
Thank you, Mariah. That's, that's awesome. And myself, I think most of you already know me or I'll be meeting you one-on-one pretty soon. But just a little bit about my background. I've lived pretty much my whole life on the central coast. Morbey High School in the 80s, early 80s. On to Cal Poly, worked private sector before I started working for the city of Atascadero in 1999. That was the same year I moved here to the city. Then left a few years later, went to work for the city of Slow, then came back in 2015 and here I am. So I've been around. It is definitely my home. It's my community. My kids go to school here. I have two 17-year-old boys in Atascadero High School, dealing with their senior year and distance learning, kind of a bummer. So they're around the house a lot. It's a lot of fun. And my wife teaches fifth grade at San Gabriel Elementary and she's been a teacher for many years here in our, our community as well. So we're all very integrated in the community and, and love it. And definitely my home that I want to contribute to. Again, I want to thank all the commissioners for their time. We're going to have a lot of great stuff that we're going to be working on over the next few months, years for that matter. Typically, what I do at the end of each of our planning commission hearings, I do talk about big development projects that are coming up. I also give you an opportunity to ask me questions about development projects that are going on in a community that you see happening or about policy decisions or about any other topics that you might want to bring onto the agenda. So that'll be a, an occurrence at every hearing. And again, I just want to mention that I'm always available. You can always reach out to me here at City Hall through email or phone or in person. Hopefully eventually a lot more in person. So that's all I'm going to say for tonight. I'm not going to give you a whole bunch of details on development. I'd like to save that for our next official hearing, which will be on February 16th, 2021, 6 o'clock, same place, right in the comfort of your own home, I think for now. So, thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Well, if there's no other business, then we are adjourned until our next regular meeting on February 16th at 6:00 PM. And I look forward to seeing you all on Zoom again. And thanks again to the outgoing planning commissioners. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Nice to meet everybody. Thank you.
Good luck, everybody.
Good luck. Bye-bye. You know, one, one little tidbit left.
Bring it, Dwayne.
Those, the planning commissioners, I mean, not the, the staff, not only does our meetings, but they also do city council. So they're doing meetings every week, plus other stuff like that. So they get hungry too and they like to go home if they can.
Thank you.
They would, they, keep in mind, go, I often go, is this a question that actually needs asking or I just being irreverently curious? And sometimes I don't say anything, but I go, this doesn't add to yes or no or information. So I always run that through because I'm trying to be considerate of, 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 for all of us, you know. The meeting doesn't have to be long in order to be effective and good.
Well said.
Well said.
That's true.
With that.
See you. Bye, everybody.
Bye, thank you.
Bye, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Goodbye.
Bye-bye.